Good evening, members. I would like to welcome, like welcome everyone, to the regular scheduled meeting of the eleven town council for a bunch of few lives. This time, with all lives, for an invitation by the town manager, Mike, following pledge of allegiance.
Our gracious Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, we want to thank you for your blessings and provisions that you've made for each and every one of us. We ask God that you will give us the wisdom, the knowledge and understanding going forward. We ask for it all these years now, Jesus. Amen.
To live to witness, to live life within the United States of America, and to be a representative for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. We are now at the aisle of board, edit for business on the agenda. I need to add, I got a phone call from the mayor of Homewood today. We're going to have July 4 celebration for 2021, and we need to have discussion on that, I'd like to have that under other business. Mayor, if you can, something?
Younger mayor, I'd like to, uh, the council to consider allowing the chief and assistant chief of leading the volunteer fire department, get in touch with the new town manager to submit bids on a new fire truck. Now, in this bid proposal will be expected for a new and used fire truck.
They'll be out of the city.
This is used for bids.
Under other business. Any other items to do other business?
I would like to add, uh, under my report, uh, executive closed session, uh, for town manager personnel to get in bids, if that's okay to add that to Jim?
Provide us with a bid through the board.
Okay.
During the gathering, is our motion to approve the agenda as edited?
I will make that motion.
For a second. From the discussion, all those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye. We have minutes for several meetings in June, and July 1st, uh, minutes for June 8th, June 15th, back up to June 12th, June 15th, June 29th, and July 1st. So, I hope everyone's had a chance to review those, and any other purposes? Let's just leave it on Mr. Dex to go through the amendments for a second.
My second, Senator.
Second, is that live?
Yes, sir.
All those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye. Then we're going to the June council paper, the council assets. Mr. Blankenship, anything additional from other than what we received during our attendance?
I would most be very pleased to be here.
For a second.
Second.
From the discussion, all those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye. Uh, I want to take this time to thank our whole supervisors and Mr. Kevin Ferguson for making arrangements for our meeting here tonight in the conference center. Kevin, we thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
Appreciate you. As advertised, at this time, we were having a joint public hearing with our planning commission. Chairman, you have a call?
You did, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Spine, did you read, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. An application is meeting by two individuals, they are addition of property on the property of Watts 24, 240, Gilford, Indiana, hardship, young, Cleveland district, and a conditional use permit for double Y, double home, will be placed on said lot. All the taken property under stepping as well.
And the chairman will turn it over to our planning commission this time. Sheriff Blackwell?
Yes. First, I'd like to, uh, welcome our new council members and our new town manager and vice president of planning commission. Uh, the request has been read by Diane, uh, compared over to RDG, who is going to be speaking on behalf of Mr. Greg Fields, as I said, on the proposal for the subdivision.
We need to always, uh, try and control the behavior.
I figured a reporter would always get on my team. Okay, um, Blackwell, okay, Jimmy, all right. Um, well, first, I want to say, uh, I'm RDG, and, uh, I'm here to represent the property for Mr. Greg Fields. That's, uh, how many, uh, Mr. Love is here, and from the lane, it's, uh, basically the end of Fields Avenue. Now, I'm sure most of you all know where it's located. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, the planning commission, uh, town manager and council for working with this. This is, you know, this is something we had hoped to do before the virus struck, and everybody's worked together, and we're finally getting here. So, I appreciate, I appreciate you kind of along the road. Also, I want to thank the, the town water service department, uh, they've been working real good with town manager and us, and we're going to show you where they now settled on putting the water line, sewer line. But, uh, the first, what we're asking is two things, and I talked to Mr. Brady, the chairman here of the planning commission, and he thinks we can take them both, count it as one, one issue. So, I'll try to do it that way, and it's probably should be things up for you all. First, first thing that we're looking for here is to, um, get the map approved for a subdivision. Of course, as you all well aware, when you split a piece of property, you only want to basically become a technical subdivision. And now, what you've got in front of you is not the final flat, okay? We've, uh, it's literally been a work in progress, but killed. Well, really, this morning, when we finally got a couple of things worked out. I want to point out to you on the flat, that the green you see is, that's where the sewer line will go. The blue you see is where the water line will go. The red, and, and, uh, Mr. Fields is going to put underground to kill, he wants to be nice. And the red, you can see what we're doing, is the pole on the south side, and, uh, down that pole, the underground to, the base in there between one, three and four, and then it'll splice off. Then you go on up, and you splice off, and that'll be for the power and the water. So, we talked, we talked to AV, and they told us how to do that. Now, the gray that you see, um, we actually, uh, this, this kind of just came up really in the last, uh, day or so, and it's a good idea, I think. Uh, but, uh, if you look at that gray area, that's basically tying in to, to kind of where the town street ends, more or less. Now, town street, what's made there is best we can tell about a ladder foot wide. And what Mr. Fields is going to do here, now, you've already got, this becomes like the field avenue ends, it becomes private road, it's a fifty-foot right away, it's private road inside of it. So, we're going to actually create two lanes. You've already got what you, it's called field avenue there, but it could extend in part, but the road does. Well, that's already there, we'll call that the lower part. What Mr. Fields is going to do is basically start it, um, the area where you see the, the range property, and he's going to build a road all the way, all the way down here to where you see lot number three and four joint. And he's going to loop it around, so that we're going to make it one-way in and one-way out, kind of thing. And, uh, so that way, uh, it eliminates some traffic problems. And he's, he's going to put, his, his road's going to be about twelve foot wide, so it's a little bit wider looks like than what actually. And another thing too, of course, is the town street, you know, two cars are meeting on a ladder foot, now here, it will actually be, keep that from happening, because it's going to loop around. But, I really, that's, I wish I'd thought of that, but I didn't, somebody else did. Um, but that's kind of how we got it, uh, laid out, uh, we've got some four tracks, um, and, uh, a couple of things that I'll mention, the planning commission, uh, we, we met here the other day, and, uh, they, they asked some questions. Of course, I'm a member of the planning commission, but obviously, I'll be abstaining, and, uh, I'm just here representing the property. But they asked me some real good, or tough questions, so they're doing a good job. And, uh, one of the questions was, uh, the guy that, Mr. Rang asked about, it was the drainage. And we, I didn't feel like it was any problem to start with, and actually, um, we talked a couple of things later, neither. But just to be sure, I thought it was a legitimate question, we met with an engineer this morning, and Mr. Blankenship was there with us, and, uh, Mr. Blankenship and Diane on this if you'd like. But, but basically, uh, basically what the engineer said was, since Mr. Fields is just going to be selling property, oh, he's not building houses. And he's going to have very limited amount of disturbance soil. And what the engineer said was, he didn't feel like that, uh, anything Mr. Fields would be doing would trigger any, any kind of soil erosion plan requirement or anything like that. Now, there's no reason to be test farming thing. Now, if somebody, if somebody puts a house up there and they start scratching around, then they think very well, have to buy a soil erosion plan and stuff for them, if they just don't fill any square foot, they don't, and you all would be put that forward. But that was one thing, and I felt better about just getting the next part out, and so, uh, so we did. And, uh, I think probably, uh, there was, uh, I think we pretty much got the question that, uh, the planning commission members had, uh, with this one, uh, I actually let, let me know, which I would address it. But I think that that's, that's pretty well, I guess, explains by law, is the post subdivision in other states.
Do you have any to applaud on?
Sorry?
How big is the water line?
Water line? Uh, I'm actually, what did you all tell them?
Well, I think that's probably something that we need to look at in regards to, uh, exactly the design and so forth of that. So, we actually know roughly where the water line is going, so as far as the size of the water line, that will be determined in the field order right after. I do know that there's a two-inch water line right up there at the top of the hill, but, uh, so obviously, we would want it to tend to at least two inches. But, but that's something that we really need to look at, just verify, make sure that codes and standards and so forth with the water sewer, all that to that. So, that's something that can be done, you know, in itself.
So, what, after we, as you noticed in the application, you can actually have two requests here, and we said we're going to try to run them together, uh, I think that will work okay. Same part of the request is, is to, this is done to R2, which I'm sure you all are aware. And, of course, uh, in, in R2, uh, manufactured homes, in this case, we talked about double Ys can, can be considered in R2 under a conditional use permit condition. And I, I thought a lot about this, we've been working on this for about a year. One of the things I think that, that the zoning does is that the reason it's got it, it's not an inherent right, it's under the conditional use permit, it's allowed, it allows you to do it on the case of a case space. You know, you have different situations, you know, you can't, you can't, you know, probably go out here at the high school and, you know, and, and work even. But there's areas where it might wheel, and I think this is the next with case, now, as you all are aware, uh, former field trade headquarters, like Cross Run, well, this property will be in there for years. And, um, it's, uh, all on Main Street, on, on Main Street. Uh, and, um, and I just, I just feel like that double Y should be allowed under certain conditions when the property presents itself, so the location's all right. Now, we want to put some, uh, reasonable restrictions, some of those, maybe one of them will may, uh, if, if you all should grant a conditional use permit, and if somebody should, we're going to put a double Y on all these lots. They'll have to remove the wheels, foundation has to be basically modular compliant in terms of concrete or brick foundation, that kind of thing. We want to put a minimum of five hundred square foot porch or deck on the front. Uh, you know, and this also dictates it has to be, you know, double Y, it couldn't be a single Y, because we want to require about a minimum of twelve on square foot, so that'd be at least, you know, thirty or forty. So, that single Y couldn't possibly be used there, and that's not our intent. Um, and no dog candles, no unlicensed vehicles, stuff like that. Uh, so, we won't, we don't want to make it, uh, you know, kind of, kind of like it's, uh, uh, you know, a five hundred thousand dollar subdivision restriction, but we want it to be common sense. And, uh, so, that's kind of, uh, I guess, long and short of what the, what we're asking the planning commission to hopefully recommend and the council to hopefully approve. Now, I would say that I would want you to, to do that subject to, so we don't have to waste time, if you, you all got enough to approve this. Subject to, we'll come back with final flat, be reviewed by the zoning, uh, mayor, by town manager, and planning commission. And, you know, so you've got some checks there, make sure that we got everything just right. And, uh, so, that's, that's my request, I'll ask Mr. Fields, if you got any questions, I'll be in my mess.
RD, I don't think the two-inch water, I don't think the two-inch water line is enough to put down two or four lots.
You're taking two, you just want to do it. Well, I, I think, you know, Mr. Field, here he can speak for himself, I think you put whatever you want. You know, that's what it's, it's for whatever it takes, but.
We, I believe you, uh, hang, Mr. Field was, you were talking about, hang, what?
We ain't done talking, yeah. Cause there's two-inch line, heaven is from, uh, can stand to that, I will miss the call, the two-inch line there, you can go on that. I'm going to look out to the handle, do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does Hank see, does Hank think two inches will work?
If, cause it's just the two inches between all them other houses, but, if they're sitting over there, it's two inches.
Oh, okay.
One thing I would say, of course, you know, if it is double Y, that's, I mean, people can put a ladder foot down the house on it if they want to, it just seems to me that it would be elevated, and there certainly there would be any go there, but I think we should be, but, but anyway, that's, that's, that's what I've got.
Thank you, RD, any questions? This time, we're going to turn it over to the chairman of planning commission, Mr. Rang?
Thank you, Mr. Rang. Planning commission have any questions for RD, or is there anyone here to speak against the proposal? I think we're going to try to do both at one time, uh, Kevin, feeling that's okay, would you go, Derek Lee? All right. At this time, we'll take the motion to approve the plot, the application as presented, with the mapping only, with restrictions that have been presented with the double Y, and the modulars to be on a permanent foundation, and subsequent water two-inch line, whether that needs to be increased or not. So, I'll take the motion, can we approve that?
I'll make that motion.
We'll have a second. All the favors, seek if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign. All right, this time, I'll take the regimen, or the, uh, request for a single, the double Ys of modulars on a permanent foundation, uh, with the fact that this second plot will become later for final approval, does that, will we get? All right, I'll take the, uh, take the request for that, ma'am.
Make the motion.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Have a second. All the favors, seek if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
I'll say aye.
You already told me that.
All right, uh, so I think if you look at our business, Mayor, remember the council.
Mr. Chairman, this time, I'll pose the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, you give the, you know, like, do you have a list of the motions for the council?
Yes, sir, on the flat and the application filed on behalf of, uh, Greg Fields, the planning commission requested the town approve that with all stipulations in place, uh, that's been mentioned. Secondly, that the approval of the double Ys of modulars be, uh, presented, be approved as long as it meets with the foundation and restrictions that have been, uh, forementioned in, uh, the reporting.
Good question. Uh, Kevin, we need second motion, we want to know, we have a motion for any approval of the first public hearings regarding the conditional use permit, as recommended by the planning commission.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
For a second.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both, say aye. And second question, is that given the condition of use for?
It's actually approval of the, the subdivision.
Approval of the subdivision, is a motion to let that? You know, a motion is a second.
My second, Senator.
We from the discussion, all those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear it, but y'all might like something, I think here. All those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both, say aye. Mr. Chairman, and members of our planning commission, thank you for the service that you give the town and the town, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, this time, we are at the part of our agenda for public comments. We get two individuals who did, who signed up previous to the meeting, and then I have a few members here who have signed up, uh, also to speak. We would ask both to limit your comments for three to five minutes, and we'll go in the order of which the names will proceed. So, this time, Mr. Will Osborne, Mr. Osborne, would you go for it?
Thank you. My name is Will Osborne, I'm the commander of John Michael Hany, King Bay, Holy Sons, Confederate veterans here in Will County. And as everybody knows, there's been a lot of wild stuff on in the country, kind of, monuments and lots and lots of that. Wild rumors running around, you know, ermine may be coming down, but we've heard that before. And I, I want to first to thank the town of Edmond for keeping them on in the neighborhood like they have. And, uh, uh, it's, uh, it's a beautiful, beautiful place, I hope you keep flowers growing, growing around it, and, and I want to thank you for that. Uh, also, the lady in the newspaper put out a great article, I don't know how many read that, they have on the front page, it's a really good article. The only thing I would just point you in was the hundred-year anniversary, their county did a dedication in, uh, 2014, and, uh, it wasn't in there, but, uh, it was a real good dedication. But I just want to thank the, the town for what they did, for what they did for us. I want, but by eighteen, passed in nineteen fifty-eight, all Confederate soldiers are considered American veterans, not Union veterans, but Confederate, but they are American veterans. That's why we can get stones, you got all the Confederate soldiers that are buried, and they don't have a stone, we give them a stone, we do a dedication for them. And, uh, that we found a lot down these hills, the hollows all through us, we can't be put a lot of state, and if you know any, just, just let us know. Governor Northam, uh, he did, he did away with the, these monuments were considered more of the more to follow. And, of course, Governor Northam, dear related, that, that's why they're, they're even named, they're topped by type of name, before that, they were completely protected. And, of course, I don't know if y'all, that monument after you, they've got Jackson, they give it to already come, Mayor. I think our little towns, the monuments will be pretty safe, but you never know, so we can, something we might want to be careful. Another thing I want to speak about is the Sons of Confederate Veterans, we have our, uh, flag, they're all with the memorial. And people call it the Confederate flag, it's actually the battle flag, and it's always a southerner. And, uh, I know there's some racists that, uh, how that flag is used, but y'all so used to American flag, Christian flag, I also. That flag was never, never been of the devil, it was designed by Blue Pilgrim Guard, and it's a southern cross, it's actually a Christian flag. Army Northern Virginia, and Army Tennessee, further the bigger, the longer version of it. And, uh, it was a soldier's flag, and Southern Confederate veterans, that is our, that is our flag, that's, that's, uh, our, our love of it. So, that, that's probably why that's our, uh, we have people who are safe to take it also. One thing with Sons of Confederate Veterans, if you're thrown out for, one is not about your ancestry, and then you're being racist, that's two things, if you're not, you can't be a member if, if, if you do. But I do hope that y'all keep the battle flag safe also. And what's on that monument says to the Confederate soldiers, a living tribute to the past, present and future. I think that means what it says, it means it will be our highest present and the future. Proverbs twenty-two, twenty-eight says, remove not the ancient man's marks, but the side bombs that say it. And that, that monument, I, I wasn't going into detail with the law, because I'm limited time, but I continue, I have the witnesses, and the orphans, sit there, diamonds and nickels, and quarters are in, ten dollars for missing, and moved out of state, nine dollars for missing, to build that monument. You can go back on the Russell County Civil website, and, and the newspaper records a lot of witnesses and such standing. These monuments were built up across the South from like eighteen seventy until nineteen, you know, twin and nineteen twenties. A lot of people said, well, they was put up during the time of Jim Crow, and white races, well, that was during the time of Jim Crow, but, but the, the reason, the monuments was to slow women on up, the South was devastated. It took them that long to get the money to get it, to do anything, and they only honored these men that went up. And then along, along to the citizens' soldiers that marched out, they brought to the whips, that were, that never came back. The daughters and the children and their fathers that came back. The mothers lost their sons, and the families that was getting devastated by the loss of a, a, maybe a parent. And even the Lord saved, it was devastating to these people, it was all assistance farmers that entered Russell County. It was a hard time for them, so that monument is still also. It's more than a, a marble monument, I was at a marble, but reading the letter in paper, and it's actually alabaster, but, but it's still, it's a beautiful monument, I'll say that. But it's not just a monument, to me, it's, it represents men. And men that left out here in Russell County, that took, not gave their units names, like New Garden Fear Knox, in my home acre. They used to be with the Thirty-Seventh Infantry, McCaffrey Jackson's foot cavalry, but, uh, not Fear Knox, N-O-T-S, it's N-A-U-G-H-T, the New Garden Fear Knox, and not Lady Seba, they, they said it feared nothing. Alacastwood, you had Kendrick's tires. And then out here in Layton, you had Dick Williams again. And all, all three of those companies went into the Thirty-Seventh Infantry, uh, infantry. And you imagine how sparsely populated Russell County was then, this is that personal war, they sent these, they sent the Thirty-Seventh, they also was in the field, they was in Fort Dawson, they was in the last, they was Russell County men everywhere. It was just men, like that monument, whether it's a man called, his name was Sammy Hupp. And he was about seven foot tall, he was a giant, and they said it was a drawl, I mean, he was sixty-three years. He was sixty-three years old when the war started. And then the New Garden Fear Knox, they did him, Mr. Kent. When he was sixty-three, when he went out, he couldn't stand the rigors of it, but he came back, joined the Holland Yard here with the Tenth Kentucky. He, he was, they said he was just a strong, rude man. He got all kinds of uh, of uh, his offspring around here, and some of your best athletes trace right back to him, I know that for a fact. But he was, he was with the Tenth Kentucky, a lot of people wonder, if you look back at your ancestors, you'll see some of these Russell County men with the Tenth Kentucky, a lot of people laugh, but how come they was with the Tenth Kentucky? Everybody was off, they was off fighting, with the Army Northern Virginia, and shit and all that. Kentucky men, they kind of either left or take a little bit, they was close to the interstate as they could be. Everybody had John Hunt Morgan and all those Kentucky men were here. Abbot was actually like a government in exile at one time. Has anybody ever heard of Texas Jack Vermillion? He rode with the, the Earth Office, he was in the Earth Bandada. In the Boney and Hollerville, that's what it says. He was uh, John Vermillion, or Jack Vermillion was his, was his name. He was in the Twenty-Secret Union Cavalry, two of my granddads, plus he also was laying almost in the Tennessee, in the Cavalry of Tennessee. But actually, war, he looked out to the soldier, he was kind of like a, both sides of the law, a guy like the Earth Office, and he failed him, Doc Holliday, but he rode on the Earth Bandada, but somebody, they arrested him one time, and they said, why they call you Texas Jack? And he said, come on, I'm from Virginia. But the truth was, he liked Texas horses, but that's how he got the name. But he, he was a character. Well, that monument stands in the Tennessee brothers, out of here at Castlewood. One of them died at the military Kentucky, first of all. The other died on Cope Hill in Gettysburg, carried, he was a flag bearer, they got it in the fire, Holley Cemetery, flag bearer, nineteen years old, I believe he was. They never came back, but that monument is big. My two great-grandfathers, they both uh, one off Drury, one off Fort Ridge, sixteen years old, both of them, when they're going in nineteen sixty-three, war had been raging quite a while then. They stayed, one of my, one grandpa was captured at Fisher's Hill during the end of the war. The other, seemed to move, but he got, healed up, he came back, and continued to the end of the war, came back from Lynchburg after the war. His ear never did heal up, just right, all his uh, pensions, said he was wounded with a gun on the side of the head, but his ear never did give us right, and uh, they said it would give him problems his whole life, and, and would, and would have taught him to follow the religion in that lifetime nineteen thirteen, so he didn't get sick a lot for that.
Were you close, Mr. Osborne, to the regiment?
I, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no.
Okay, I was gonna say that, also your ancestors is representing on that, if you look back, you'll see that, that your ancestors maybe had uh, was very, they want to, I want to say one thing quick, change, this is a book I've written about Russell County, Russell County in Civil War, based on a good courage and that pretty woman back up with that, I'm like a tiger, the chair on it, I've got three of them, that's a fifteen dollars if anybody wants to buy them, but I've got more of them, and our county will meet, we meet the Thursday of every uh, month, we must do this matter, something along, we are having a meeting Sunday at the Farmers Market on the nineteenth at uh, two o'clock, if somebody had time, get a charge, and I, and I do appreciate y'all, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here, thank you for listening. Larry, forget, Larry Hughes.
I want to thank your wonderful, my name's Larry Hughes, I think the last few months I've asked, I'm here as discovered, it's LA ROI, AQJGS, I reside in Russell County, being both a co-owner and co-business owner and a co-landowner here in the town of Lebon. Have been for probably over twenty-five years, and now, now I'll try to get closer. Uh, I wanted to give, to thank, to take the opportunity to thank our local members of this council for the bid resolution, uh, it takes time, I do appreciate that. Uh, I'm not here to represent any specific group, except to say, in my opinion, I am voice of the concerns of many local citizens, that being the good people of Virginia, in the exercise of sovereign powers as more fully described in the Virginia Constitution, specifically the Declaration of Rights. Uh, it is well understood that the general policy that the Constitution of Congress of Virginia is the doctrine that defines a legislative, the powers are state governed and the basic rights of the citizens. Here too, we're planning to advise which rights do pertain to them and their prosperity as to the basics and foundation of government. I think this goes without saying, but I want to remind you that you have taken an oath with the officers, after you were elected and when you were sworn into office, for the Code of Virginia, section forty-one, uh, the general oath requires officers, I do solemn swear, affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Congress of Virginia, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge all news and trouble upon me, and I assume here you state that you're a county council member. According to the best and my building, so help me God. And I'll continue with this, I want to breathe a little bit to try to keep my thoughts somewhat coherent. As such, I wish to remind each of you, and I want to put a, a, I want to put a caution here, I am not a legal scholar, I am not attorney law, and do not represent me that. However, I do think the Constitution is written in the common language for the citizen to understand, to which the Constitution, Article One, Bill of Rights, section one directs all Congress citizens that all men of a na- nature equally free and independent have certain inherent rights, of which when they enter into the state side, they cannot by any compact be deprived or at best their prosperity, this being our future generations, our children, our grandchildren, and generations to come. Again, under section two, we are given governance rules and directives whereby we are told by section two, that the people is the source of power, that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people, that magistrates are the trustees who serve us and at all times the minimum to them. As such, magistrate, any individual who has the power of a public, that's civil, civilian officer, in other words, magistrate is a civil officer who holds exactive legislature and jurisdictional authority, that's you. Also, we should look at trustees, which indicate that trustees are persons or firms that hold administrative property or assets for the benefit of a third party, third party benefit of the people of Virginia, the people of Russell County, the people of town Lebon. By the way, trustee acts as a legal owner, assess trustee assets, his responsible handling of the assets given to trust. According to the terms of the trust, that's been the Constitution, both involve duties that are legally required. Here again, I ask you to recall, trustees are servants at all time of minimum to them, so we should look at a minimum means really to be responsible to, agreeable to, submit to a higher authority. Now, let's look back at what the higher authority, recall, section two, people are the source of the power, that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people. What's simply, what I simply, and I want to ask for you, the elected trustees, is to take all steps necessary to protect our heritage from illegal and laws act, by action from all who oppose you creating civil risk, or destroying public property, private property, uh, excessive mob and town issue riots. Ask that the peaceful assembly be allowed, all citizens of this town or the county, the keyboard here now is peaceful assembly to address any agreements that you have. Again, the city, if there's movement comes to mob, and they become destructive, then you shall take action to protect both private and public property. I like what we're seeing that's happening in the news, if it's wrong, you have an obligation to protect us, the citizens and the citizens' property. I expect the solution of you, the service of your constituents, as out number six three, the government instituted by common benefits, that the government is or ought to be instituted with the common benefits, protects and security of the people, nation, and community, now this is your people and our community. I ask behalf of your citizens, provide the legal rights as given by section eleven, due process of law, taking or damaging our private property, prohibited discrimination, whether the case may be. Anyone that wants to come and address this assembly should be open, whether it's pro or con, with the, the statutes, I think, I'm, I'm addressing pro or against the statutes, someone wants to take it down, let them come legally, do it, legally, peacefully. If someone comes here with a tent, destruction, take it down with that legal authority, we have to stop it. No person, no person should be driven to live, live your property without due process of law, the general sentence y'all passed, no laws or any laws impairing the obligation of contracts, that rights be free from any government discrimination upon the basis of religious conviction, race, color, sex, or national origin shall not be written, except the thing, mere separation of sexes, or sexes shall not concern discrimination. I'm a simple, mild-minded citizen, asking for due process, protecting our rights as owners of public property and land or community. Uh, our history, again, what we're looking at is our history, not slavery, we're looking at history, protect our, our trunk. My, according to what Mr. Or, Mr. Osborne told me there, we citizens, our family fathers, were being invaded by foreign, a tribal government in the north, we were citizens, I was a citizen of Dallas, I don't think my, my parents were born slaves. My parents was probably in dentistry service would come over, I know my dad was a, was a sheriff's carper for years, if you don't know what a sheriff's carper is, you live from year to year, you have the right to move farm to farm, if you make enough money, you will eat for the year, so families had lots of kids that weren't filled, so we were not much different than anyone else. I'm not sure we had lost slaves, I don't think we did, so we're not finished slavery, didn't defend it, we were defending our homes, they were coming in, they were attacking our community, they were attacking our homes, they were taking our livestock, our food, attacking our families, we were defending, we were asked to defend the state against the foreign government. We were not traitor, we're not traitors of the state, we were an individual state of Virginia, not one time with the individual state, we're, we're United States, but we're a free and independent state, and we shall still, still are, should be. Now, with that said and done, I, I'll do this, I feel that the public property belongs to us people, and we have a right to have it protected. Now, as the people, the parent of people, we're asking you, in your job, to make sure that this is protected. If there's an issue, and I'll be the first to agree to it, if there's a referendum, just vote it down, remove this stuff, I'll back it, but unless there's a referendum of the people, I will not back it, and I will defend it, by the civil, and I appreciate you, y'all.
Thank you, Larry. Craig Sowers, did I say that right?
Sowers, yes.
Sowers.
And apparently I've heard a speech, because I'm not good at talking a speech. Um, just a little background, my name is Craig Sowers, I've been living in the London for about fifteen years or so, uh, originally from Baltimore, so I know the problems or the cities you have. Freshwater High School, was in the military. I'm considered part of the silent majority, not today. Today, our communities are being torn apart, and it seems that there's no end. Today, our governments are siding with this nonsense. We have citizens that are supposed to be protected, they're afraid to do their homes. Today, we have local law enforcement being villainized, demonized, and moralized, it seems like it's come from all sides. Today, the silent majority will be silent in the morning. We have riots under the guise of peaceful protests. A core of, occurring all over this great nation, murders rioting exponentially, Chicago, Detroit, Baltimore, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the catalysts of this happen seems to be George Floyd. Everyone, including law enforcement, will say that this was a terrible tragedy and this officer, involved should be prosecuted, there's no doubt about it, everyone will say that. But protesters, they never miss a people, understanding people always ready to take advantage of opportunity. So groups like Black Lives Matter and Antifa, they hijack these protests. Every time there's a black male killed by L E, these groups, fight a little protest. I want a drug dealer who kills a homeless man over three hours. I want a little girl who's going home, working in her own home, and is killed by a drug by shooting. I want a small teenage boy who's putting a fifty-five gallon drum, set on fire, burned to death, simply because he wouldn't join a gang. See, Black Lives Matter, they don't care about people, all they really care about is destroying our communities, and terrorizing our citizens, except there's one problem, L E, law enforcement, they're always in the way. I should qualify this, they're always in the way when they're allowed to be, because we know what's happening in some of these other cities. So their mantra is to defund and abolish the police. Obolish the police, that's, that's actually crazy. I would hate to be a police officer in this political climate. Many here would remember nine eleven, I sure do. One of the most striking things I remember is when everyone was running for safety. It was New York Police Department, the New York Fire Department, running into these buildings to save your people. How that one up in DC, when they're having that softball game, the range riflemen, police had run across fields with no cover whatsoever, they didn't willingly. There was. Mayor de Blasio wants to cut a really down, um, North, out of the New York budget, I don't know if y'all are aware of that, I know most of you probably are. Power's in Seattle, they want to slash that, like about fifty percent of the police department. Tampa, they want to start sending social workers out on nine mile length calls, how many times did that turn by? They're social workers, we have a presidential candidate demonizing our local law enforcement. Show of hands, how many here support our local law enforcement? Excellent, excellent. There have been murals painted all over these other cities about Black Lives Matter, and I'll be honest with you, I'm sick of it. They thumbed their nose at law enforcement, because they were protected by a liberal local governments. Black Lives Matter. Show of hands, how many think Black Lives Matter?
All, all.
All, I don't get it.
Exactly. Blue lives matter, Italians, Mexicans, all lives matter. Right now, there's a war going on against our local law enforcement. I for one want to show that eleven police, Russell County sheriffs, the Virginia State police, that I support you and that I have your back. It's really quite simple, it's one of the simplest things. As I speak, I'm fine with, back the blue flag of my, of my own, I've been fighting ever since I put that first thing down about Black Lives Matter, no. I'm not asking the council to endorse this, I, I hope they do, I'm just asking permission to proceed. Um, what I want to do, I want to put a bill down that supports our local law enforcement, back the blue. I don't, design doesn't matter, um, and somebody to work with, I'll be glad to pay for it. I don't care if we do banners, I don't care what we do, but I want to do something in letting this issue, Black Lives Let Matter, fruit. Antifa, you are not welcome here. I feel like time tells the essence, so as soon as somebody can give you an answer, in contact with me, I'll leave my information, I'll be glad to work with someone.
This man, the other one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean, Sean Vance?
Good afternoon. My name's Sean Vance, and I was going to say about everything that three gentlemen already said. So I'm not going to waste a lot of time going over again, I agree with what they had said, I live in the county, I do not reside in the town, I'm town of Lebanon, I wish we had, uh, people show up for the board of supervisors meeting as we had here tonight. Um, so I won't speak anymore, because that gentleman spoke eloquent enough, there's no reason to feed a dead horse, so thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Steve Green, Steve.
I'll be brief. I don't have any prepared statement, but I'm just going to speak with the heart. My name is Steve Green, I live in the town of Lebanon, fifty-one Lydley Street, I represent District Five on the Board of I represent District Five on the Board of Supervisors, the majority of which is in the town, that is made up of the town of Lebanon, and some outlying areas. And I appreciate everything the town does for that portion of the district. It's made my job there substantially easier. And I offer my support in trying to do things within the, within the town. If you need my help, if you need to call me, I'm there. You know that. I've been bombarded, so to speak, by communications from people, not only in the town, but people living outside the town, who have a sentimental attachment, as I do, to the monument. I grew up in Lebanon, lived here most of my life. And I can remember seeing it back in the theaters, you know, it's always been a landmark. It's not only a Confederate monument, so to speak, but it's a monument to the soldiers of World War I and World War II, which my great-grand, actually, my grandmother was a private in World War I. You've got pictures of it. And I feel like the bridge is required in a state because I know that you have the same feelings as all the other people in the county. And as I do, that it's a landmark more than anything, and it's part of our history. And I don't, everyone see that go, I don't want to ever see in the town of Lebanon, or in Russell County, or anywhere in southwest Virginia, things going on like I see on TV. I fully support law enforcement. We have to fund them properly. I'm very supportive of that. I'm supportive of our troops, and I think this monument is a, is a statement to what they, some of the prizes that they've actually paid. Many of them, as you well know, pay hell of a price. So I'm really here speaking, I guess, to let you know that there are more people than just within the town have a deep attachment to that statue, and they feel strongly about it. And although they know that they're not within the town limits, they, they will support it. They will do whatever is necessary to try to make sure that the monument stays in place. And again, I offer a few, I feel like perhaps we need to do an ordinance or something. There's statutes, state statutes, that they can be illegal to face or warm on world. But we can't be any more, we, any more lenient than what the state requires, but we can be more stringent. And I'm not sure that maybe we need to look at, maybe a county ordinance that puts teeth into facing just public property in general. Maybe, I think, community service. I would much rather see somebody out there cleaning it, fixing it, than have their money. So, again, I offer my support to the council. Anything you need from me, I will take it to Board of Supervisors. And I'm not sure what support I can get. I feel like most of those folks on my board are very supportive of this issue. And again, thank you so much for what you do. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Steve. Justin Keith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe many of you all know me well. You know my intentions are good, and you know the dedication and service that I've contributed to the town. I'm speaking today because I was fearful that no one else would be speaking for the other side on this issue that many people inside of the town limits and in Russell County are sympathetic to. Also, speaking this evening in representation of many young people who were born here, who attended school here, many of whom were taught by two of you who sit on the council tonight. But they did not feel like they had the opportunities in Lebanon, in Russell County, in southwest Virginia to continue to stay here. So they went off to college, and they took jobs in other parts of the state, in other parts of the country, because there are better opportunities, but also because they feel as if their values aren't well represented here. Many of those people have reached out to me. They saw the coverage that we got during the Black Lives Matter event that we hosted in Lebanon. They were very surprised to see and proud to see that there were people here in Lebanon who recognized that Black Lives do matter, and that they have been systematically and very painlessly targeted for years, statistically so, by law enforcement and by many other aspects of government. So those people reached out to me. They were so excited to see there was support for this in Lebanon. They were sad that they couldn't be present also to participate, and they asked me what can be done about this statue.
Do you know what it means?
Remember, everyone, we are, we have to allow the public to comment, as stated earlier, for all in common. So it's just, Mr. Keith finishes comments.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
So the General Assembly has given you, as the town council, new authority to remove, relocate, or contextualize any sort of monument that falls into this statue, which includes Civil War memorials. The question that you face today is, does this statue placed in prominent location in the center of our town, that delineates east from west Main Street, represent the best values and ideals of our town today? I would say that no, it does not. Our ancestors may have fought and died in the Civil War, and their sacrifice is appreciated. But ultimately, they fought in the war for the cause of slavery. This cause, this cause has not been remembered fondly by history. So how will history remember us today in a moment in time where there is increasing support and movement to better contextualize what happened and to make new commitments moving forward that recognizes the value of every human being? This statue is no longer appropriate to remain in this modern climate and in such a prominent position in our town, because it does not represent the best of our town. There are multiple locations inside the town that would be a better fit for this monument in a better context, one of which could be the Confederate graveyard that currently is on Quill and Hill. This graveyard has sadly been in a state of mal maintenance. It has not been properly mowed and kept. And I understand this is not on public property, but this could be a location that would be more appropriate for a statue. If the statue's relocated, we would have an opportunity to memorialize someone or something that does better represent the values and ideals of our town. When we think back about who else from our town's history may be more appropriate to memorialize in this fashion, one possibility is Ryan McGlaughlin. Ryan McGlaughlin was a native hero of Lebanon. He was gifted. He was kind to all. We commemorate him with other statues and monuments, as well to the scholarship at Lebanon High School. Ryan answered the call to serve after nine eleven. He dropped everything. He dropped his studies. He dropped his career to enlist in the United States Marines and serve his country. People like Ryan do best represent the ideals of our town, and that could be one possibility as a replacement of this statue that sits in such a prominent place in the town. What's more important, though, than in making a decision on this statue, because I understand statues have little meaning in comparison to people's lives, is, or should we take this moment in this point in time to better reflect on how we are treating each other? I support law enforcement in Lebanon one hundred percent. Many of you know, I've worked for substance abuse prevention and advocate for treatment and recovery. And I've worked consistently, constantly, with law enforcement at the table on prevention issues. And we've made great strides at reducing the underage use of drugs and addiction in our community, in part due to the efforts of law enforcement. One hundred percent, full stop. But this is a point when we can reflect on how we treat each other and make sure that the practices that we are using, not only in law enforcement, but in all aspects of government and our society, are humane and civil, that we are treating everyone with equal protection of the law in a way that is fair and honest and recognizes the value of every human being. Thank you very much.
Fay, Fay Bates.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Fay Bates. I've lived seventy-seven plus years in Russell County, and more than fifty-five of them right here in Lebanon. And that statue always thought represented all of our service men and women that way it is served in the military and that for our country. I didn't realize that people thought of it just as a Civil War monument until I went out and I looked at the writing on the back of it. But I still feel like that we should keep that monument red sand, right in that gray spot, because we've always thought of it as a Lebanon town monument and quite represented. And it's got to stop somewhere. Let us stop it now.
What do you think?
Okay, this completes our couple of comments section. I want to thank everyone who was here present for their comments.
Hi, we're going.
There is no, there's no agenda on that on this, as we told you. We have had no official request on that. It is property of Lebanon and will be treated such as any other property that we have. So it'll be taken care of. So, again, thank everyone for being here. Thank you for your presentations. At this time, we will be taking a break prior to the town manager's report. So at this time, I'd like to pay our town council a recess. At this time, I'll call us back here to the session. Uh, please, to the town manager's report.
Yes, sir. Of course, you should have your package, a small list that I've got here. But basically, I'm just, more or less want to bring up, give at least some direction on a couple of things. The first one is a water rate for swimming pool filling in town and out of town. There is an occasion. Now, this isn't something that goes on every day, or this is a new move. So if you want to give me direction, or we'll talk about it another day, that's fine. But I was just asked this question, and we don't have anything in place in regards to if someone in the town wanted to bring their tanker, put it on the back of the truck per se, and get some water from the town and go fill up their swimming pool. That's what, that's basically what we're talking about here. We're not talking about a town employee going to the residents, you know, or fire department or anything like that to fill up a pool. But on occasion, this, this has happened where they went over to the shop. There is a fire hydrant there that's got a meter on it. And so whatever, whatever they pump out, basically, or fill up to take to their swimming pool, they will, I guess Billy or someone, whoever is there, will read that meter at that point in time. And they went to Cindy and said, Cindy, this customer, whoever it is, they've got X number of gallons of water to fill up their swimming pool. So what they have been doing is using the rate four point oh four dollars per gallon, and that's what we basically charge Russell County. That's the information that I received from Cindy. But again, this isn't something we do all the time. You may not even want to fool with it. You may want to say, well, this is something that we would like to provide. So therefore, we need to come up with a rate, not just a flat, you know, this is just what we're doing. Or this is not just a rate we're going to use just to cause convenience. You know, so all I'm doing is, you want to talk about it, think about it. I'm just bringing it up just because it's something that has happened in the past, and just want you guys to know. And just, if you want any direction or take it over, we can talk about it later.
Four dollars and four cents, is that what you said?
Yeah, that's what it is right now. That's what we charge the Russell County. They take water from us. They're charging a rate that we are charging them. That's what they're using.
When you say Russell County, do you say?
I'm sorry, yeah, Russell County, PSA. We supply them water. Okay, and she's using the rate that is set up for them.
Oh, I missed that. Did you, you're not already selling water to fill up pools or?
No, 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 no. Oh, oh, they have done it in the past, and that's why it's been brought up. They, they went out to the shop, and they have, you know, come up with a tank, maybe a hundred gallon tank or whatever, back of the truck. I don't know how they do that. But I just visualize what's took place. And they have metered the water, so they pay the gallons. So it's not, it's not been free. It's not been, you know, handed out or anything like that. It's just, I'm just bringing up, you know, should we come up with a rate? Or leave it like it is? Maybe once in a blue moon, somebody might want some water. We can do it. Or is it even important to come up with a rate? That's all I'm asking, because, you know, I'm now responsible for everything going on. So I would be asked a lot of questions, you know, and I want direction, because I don't want to make some decisions, you know.
What's that, Bill?
Four dollars and four cents per gallon?
Well, I, I, it may be per thousand. I don't know what it is. I didn't get the units. It may be per thousand. Actually, I think it is. I'm sorry.
That's too, that's too much, too, though. That could be ready.
It's four dollars, four dollars a thousand. A thousand gallon, yeah.
I, I, I would suggest we get more.
Information.
What is more? Who are we? What does somebody think for a thousand? What is more for? How much are you getting?
Well, per thousand.
Whatever it is.
I can, I can do that, and I can report back to you, or I can put it in my weekly report. This is exactly the situation. I just brought it up for discussion.
I think that's a good idea of something that we wanted to sell water.
No, let's get someone to mention the rate back there, but.
That'd be fine.
Go ahead.
I've got a question, Mayor. Can you give, can you give the council and Mr. Blaine some direction on the fire department filling those up? Is that, is that worth the liability of us sending a truck? Because I know people have requested that in the past.
See, Bill, I said you've been with it. I don't believe we, this has been a problem. I don't believe our fire department's still in this.
It takes up a little problem. It might be something that in the truck that they do for a swimming pool. I don't know.
Or, or, we have people outside the county that score. I know we turned them in.
That's fine.
But, you know, those resource force right there, what do you say, Brad? I mean?
It's staying there.
But we need to continue to review this?
I would, I would continue to review and bring it back up.
Was there a reason that you know of that the fire department wouldn't want to do that? Is somebody asking?
Well, again, it could go back to another way for the fire department to generate a little bit of revenue. You wouldn't want to take a lot of revenue off of that, but it's also a liability whenever we go and direct it to them.
But it's also a liability whenever we go and direct it to him and have him tow it up to somebody's house.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We're not staying in the, you know, and we do a pool and, you know, something happens, that water goes bust the whole of the pool. Then, then what you got? You know, we want to help everybody out as much as we can.
But this would be a normal life thing if water was poured before they did it.
I just don't remember, I just don't remember us doing that. I remember being a problem. Something happened. I remember being a problem with the fire department. And now, what you're proposing is totally different. You're saying they come to the shop, bring their own tanker, hook up, fill it, they meter and we get a little deal.
And they see Sandy and Sandy built it. So there's a rate, but is it a right rate?
Well, just, just to think, if you charge fifteen cents for selling a hundred and fifty gallon tank is a hundred and twelve dollars. So.
How much do we charge the PSA for a water gallon?
It's four dollars and four cents, I think, is per thousand. I'm pretty, pretty sure. But I, I mean, let me get back with you on the exact. I know the number's right, it's just how many gallons it is. I know the numbers for sure, right?
It says a thousand.
But I'll have, let me, let me go check.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. The next item is, and when I talk about this, I don't mean that this is something that we should do, so I don't mean that at all. But on occasion, and I'm just going to try to paint a picture here, let's just say that someone is trying to repair their water, uh, our guy's is out there fixing the meter, doing whatever the case might be. And before they leave, you know, a customer says, hey, you know, there's a fitting that I need, or there's a, a material, whatever it might be, that I need and it, I want to make sure that I can connect you, you know, whatever that fitting might be. Can I buy that fitting off you because I know you've got one on your truck? Okay? Is that something that we would want to do? Because in, in the past, someone would be in a bind and I'm not talking about being a grocery store or Lowe's or anything. We definitely don't want to do that. And we definitely don't want to start purchasing material for people and reselling. So I'm not, I'm not insinuating that. I would be against that. What I am saying, let's see that you're, just say you're at December and it's almost Christmas time and you had a big water leak and the person, the customer has a water leak and all they need is one fitting. And it's the middle of the night, whatever, you can't buy Lowe's, it's going to take two weeks to get it from whoever's, you know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to paint a scenario in an emergency type situation. Would we, knowing we've got a fitting on our truck, to say, we'll, we'll let you purchase this fitting? I'm just trying to paint a picture here. So I just need direction. This has happened because a customer was in a bind and it's like, hey, we can sell you this part and we're done, we got water, we got one on the truck, we'll just send you a bill. If we do that, then there's certain things I need to do even on an emergency situation. Number one, we're tax exempt, so we purchase that part without paying taxes. So if a customer buys that part from us, technically and legally, they need to pay taxes on that. So you see what I'm, so it could get a little muddy at the same time. So I'm just wanting direction. How do you want us to go forward? Do you want us to say, hey, I'm sorry, we're just not going to do that? You know, you, you may not have water till tomorrow or two days, but you're going to have to try to Lowe's, we'll give you a number to call, but we're, it's just not worth the hassle. I just want your direction, how we need to move forward because it has happened. And usually it's an emergency situation, but it has happened. But now it's under my watch, so I want everything to be exactly the way it should be, so I want direction.
Now, we never did sell parts, but if it was an emergency, I guess you would have fixed it if it was post-Christmas and there's come up charging so much for a part. We most time will tell them, go get your part and we can clean it off. But now if it's an emergency, I'd say that's a different situation.
Well, I tell you what, someone asked me for, that could get some pie. And to me, I thought, since I had, I just thought if you looked at that and waited at the council, you know, would give somebody or show somebody some supply, purchase, I think that we looked right. I mean, I think it would be unethical and to me, I don't think anybody should have been on this or anything like that.
Absolutely not.
I'm just afraid if you start to open up that can of worms, you know, emergency situation, midnight, Christmas, might be one situation. But if you open up that can of worms, then we might start, you know, selling them to, you don't want to get into the case like, you know, saying, start to show favoritism.
Well, to me, if they sent a chain on, we would be fixing it anyway, wouldn't we?
Now, it's all in this small town.
Like if I had it, if it goes on my property.
But I feel like that would be a good, I, I feel like we should leave that discretion to Kevin. Uh, point being is because he can, he can pretty well weigh the situation out. As far as the taxes go, um, I would just take whatever that part costs, send it to Sandy, let her put tax on it, put it on her next bill. That way she would take care of the tax end, you gave the, you gave the direction on whether we're going to supply the part or not supply the part due to the situation. That would be fine. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
And, and the council needs to agree on it. But instead of calling all seven of us on Christmas Eve night and saying, hey, we got this issue, what should we do? I mean, I think you should make that call.
Yeah.
But not midday, you know?
Emergency, emergency situation.
And then to me, we follow with you, Kevin, whoever, Billy, whoever's on the site. If it's, if it's past store hours, if people can't get water to their house.
And we got the part on the truck, all we got to do is change.
I think it's very important that council be advised and let us repair it because certainly we don't want to count a wholesale business or something, can't. It's one of our roles.
And we don't want to hurt our businesses either, so we want to go to Lowe's, right?
What do you have for you, Eddie?
We're letting it lie. Well, that's where I stand. I think it could be up to the judgment of the manager and the supervisor and then, and just let Sandy handle it after that. We would find out what we paid for that product and then go to Mary. As Mary said, if it's two o'clock in the day and they don't have it, chance it may not be an emergency. You know, but I hate to think it's Christmas morning, there's five young people, they don't have no water just because of a, a little park. So, you know, that, I think we entrust it to you to make that decision, basically.
Man, who did you go with? You do care for somebody? Lord, so that's going to be in your lap, the city manager, the supervisor.
So, so what I would do then, I'll pretty much, what I would follow as a guide is if it's an emergency type situation, we will do, we will try to help the customer. You know, obviously we can't buy them four hundred foot conduit or a water pipe. That, that can't get emergency, you know what I'm saying? But if it's something pretty small, it's an emergency, it's inconvenience, if we don't help them, they won't have water, they won't, whatever that kind of case might be, then, then that's fine. Then we'll, we'll go that route. But that, so you know, that's how I would treat these situations.
I just encourage you to watch that slip. Not be careful.
And I would encourage them not to.
Okay.
And if it is an item that I know Lowe's does have, and I will know that, I will, then, then, you know. Okay. Okay. Next item, this is something that I just wanted to clear with you guys. Uh, I know that it's under my five thousand. However, uh, it's looking at the railing. This is the railing that, what does it shows? It's called something they changed or nothing? Yeah. Uh, this gentleman, uh, Keith Steffy, he is the contractor that has put railing throughout the entire town. Uh, but before, I was just going to turn it loose without trying to get that flow or trying to, I was wanting to make sure, are we still walking down this same path and just letting him go ahead and order it, install it? He's gave us a quote, which is, I put it in your pad, it's forty-three hundred and fifty dollars, uh, to take care of that railing right there.
It's the same corner as the rest of the rate from the town? You wouldn't make the rest of the rate?
It's exactly the same, what, same contractor, it's the same railing, it's exactly what you've done to the downtown. But I wanted to just clear to you guys for this on trip.
Well, it's part of the, they finished the downtown revaluation, they were going to the properties, the back of the ceiling. It would appear it'd be worth a try to submit that reimbursement under the downtown ramp, under the sidewalk. Because the dumpster sidewalk didn't really have any kept accessible. They put in new windows up there today. So I, I mean, I, I agree with you, it's under, under the five thousand limit, but I think, I think there's a chance we could get reimbursed for that.
Yes.
Through, through the downtown property.
Right. And we could even use this match if we need to. So, but I wanted to just make sure I get a consensus to go ahead and give this guy a nod to go ahead and install it and purchase it and get it done.
Were we taking the intent contracts like that for the side? Is that something that's already been signed?
Side's already been, contracts already been signed. Uh, I, I understand what you're saying. This is a fitting for five thousand dollars. You want to know the proceed and I would, as I said, just I would make the effort to give that money back to the downtown sidewalk.
And, and I will.
I'm sorry.
No, I just want to make sure it's, you know, is the money we can get back, how is it recovered under downtown revaluation? You know, because they did a lot of work on the show and it really looks nice. Uh, but how much over that particular budget, you know, will that take then and where did that thing just go from down to the foundation?
Right.
Who do you have for?
We don't give you the concrete, actually.
So he's asking us to do it. Have you already given this to him?
I've, I've already had him debid it because he has been going through the town and doing this. But this is a project that I'm responsible for now and I just wanted to make sure, okay, we're, we're still walking down this path or do I need to start getting moving?
I think you're, let me reword, this is my thing. I'd make a phone call to Vivy to come and let the, is it Viv?
Yes, yeah, I emailed her.
Who's taking over our project over the side. I'd ask her what, what, that the balance of those funds, is, is this, ask her if that amount is reimbursable and makes the criteria for the project. And, uh, we don't need to give her a license and I know we don't like to get, we don't need to, if you get an answer, if you say yes, that's a good thing. You should say, somehow let us know, yes, that's, if it's not reimbursable, we probably need to revisit.
Can you get it on beat up money?
It's on street right away. I mean, actually it goes all against the.
I bet you knew that beat up money.
We may be, I don't know what the percentage is. Yeah.
That'd be possible.
We talked about, we talked about that beat up money, how we couldn't bring in those outside in the streets because of this construction. Remember speaking?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Well, this is, this would fall under maintenance because they tore everything down.
So there was a rail there prior?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've got to take it out. There was one little piece, it wasn't always crossed because it was bounced.
Yeah.
I don't think there was any rail there.
It was a step seven. But the sidewalk was torn out. Everybody from the road to the right way was torn out.
So I wonder if that's covered, I think, I wonder if that's what the engineers said. You have to redo this and put it on the ground.
Could be in the contract.
See, this, this could have been already planned and done, but I'm giving a quote and a bill, but I want to make sure I'm good at doing it. Because I wasn't here when, you still aren't, and it is under the five thousand, but this to me is still important. This is downtown, this is.
Right.
So I still want your, your nod, but also I want to, uh, to add is this is a safety issue.
Yeah.
You know, we, we need it up as soon as possible. And I just got this quote Thursday. And I knew it was meeting tonight and I said, hey, put the cones up, you know, that should be, we're not open yet. So bear in mind, you know, it needs the railing because it's a safety issue. So we need it up as soon as we can, but.
When do they open now?
This Saturday.
See, I feel like revisiting it isn't the best option. I think you could check and see if we could get our money back, but this is a project that has to be done, as you said. And it's probably because we're under new construction there now that the engineers replaced it there as the proper responsibility. But I feel like, one, for one, it needs to go ahead and be done. Two, uh, moving forward with Keith, Keith has done ninety percent of everything in town. Very reliable, very honest and very good craftsmanship. So I just think it's only right to continue using him. He's one of the best in the business in my area. Can we give him a proofable on contention that it will be reimbursed?
Well, I think there are two things. Now that it's a safety issue, it may, may not matter if it's reimbursed. I think we can ask under both programs for things against urban maintenance. I think, and you know what? It may very well be in that contract to let, if you can get your hands on the side contracts for each building, it may be in there.
This may be part of, this may be part of, but I'm just here.
But I'm pretty sure it's probably in that slot with the engineers.
But also, we need to remember, this is our property. So we've got to make our property safe. Like Brad's saying, this is our property, it's not their property, this is our property, so it needs to be safe.
If he, if he opens Saturday, a lady falls and breaks her hip, she gonna have handrail for it.
I don't think he'd be renting the Saturday, you'd be.
Probably, but I'm guessing, but we're, we're not being neglect, neglected either or neglect, neglected, negligence, there we go. Because we have, uh, cones set up all around the sides to keep people from walking off, so we're not, it's safety, we're still under construction, you know, so we're not, we've not crossed the line yet, but just need direction.
So what, a lot of damage. We just want to build it and then get back to the third, our, it's going to be paid.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to proceed with the handrail project as stated and then we take care of it and then find out if we can be reimbursed. And if we can't, it's still going to be done.
Okay. Proceed.
I'll think about that, Mayor.
We have a motion to adjourn, be further discussion. All the players say aye.
Aye.
Those say aye. Okay?
And I will follow up with a report and let you know what I found out, if there's monies or, so I will follow up on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next item is vetoed. There's some, uh, streets and roads that's located in the town limits that is not on the state sheet or the town sheet of roads that, that we take care of. So I met with, uh, JR, uh, I gave him the list, the listing of these streets that we know about. And basically, I wanted to find out, you know, is there monies available? I pretty much knew, you know, like construction piece, the money we receive is not for construction, it's for maintenance. So, but I wanted to meet with him, let him be aware, which he was aware of it. And how could we proceed if we do proceed? Is there monies available, grants, whatever, which they might be, but is that a stretch for what we're wanting to do here? But, so at the end of the. But, so at the end of the day, if we want to bring in these streets into our system, is, it's going to come out of our general fund. So if there's any repairs, or any construction so forth, we're looking at engineering work, we're looking at construction. So I can foresee it costs a lot of money to do this, I would think. You don't know until you start, you know, doing the engineering work on it, which that's going to cost money to do the engineering work. So my thinking is, is, is this something that we may want to just table, keep it in the back of our minds, is that what we want to do? Do we want to pick and choose which ones we would like to see come into our system? Do we want to just move forward? I just want some direction, but I want to let you know, you know, this is what it will take if we want to bring them into our system. There's going to be several thousands of dollars that will have to spend, our tax basis.
Well, thank you, this would be appropriate for lives as a community, street community.
Okay, great.
How many do you have there?
Four.
There's one on Career Tech that we're going to have to address pretty quick, in fact of, we're going to have a water and sewer project there, come to center, correct? That's what Doug was asking, what, what he's proposing to do there. Career Tech itself, that's straight, it's fairly wide. I don't think that one, I think that one would never be fairly cheap to bring up the VDOT standards. But in order for us to bring water from that hydrant now, next to Mr. Lars, up to Doug's, we're going to have an easement flush, we're going to cut the road. So how do we go about getting permission to cut that road and to repair it without that road being ours?
Well, you can get easements, of course, but really, the only thing that we would have to do with that road, which is probably the, probably won't cost as much as the other roads that we looked at, is we have to put a cul-de-sac in it. So you would have to do that, so that's, you're still looking at several thousands of dollars to do that, because it's a dating street.
So who owns the road?
I thought that street turned down, um, down to Doug's.
Well, if you do the whole street, we're talking about the whole street.
Right.
Now, they, if you want to do portions of it, and it does connect to, that's one thing.
Right.
But it depends on how much of it that you want, so that's something we can't...
That, that would be the one I would attack first, because we've got, we've got a project going on there currently, and it's, and it's a good road, it's paved, it's wide, well, it's not real wide, but it's, but the foundations there are important to be wide, so, and as far as the ditching, it's, I think it's okay.
Does the school own that road?
It's somebody's right away, and I think it's the school. I, I mean, I don't know that, if it may be Mr. Tiller to look at the dealings, or I don't know if he may be able to chime in and give us direction there.
But we have to ask for that, we have to give us permission to turn that road over to the town?
Oh, yeah, you'd have to have a ride.
Well, that's why I keep asking, do you own it, is, they're going to give us the permission to take that building, or question that what we can do. And I'm, I'm thinking it probably is the school.
And they may not want to give it to us.
May not, they closed that gate up there.
Yeah, well, I know they want, wanted to pass the gates.
They're going to give us, probably give us, I bet you're right.
Yeah.
And all that, we don't want to...
Yeah. But you brought up a really good point, if we only want to bring in a section of the thing, they may not want the whole thing, then the school board may be faithful, we will want all of it, I don't, that's something we have to look into.
I think we've got to find out if we own this one. What I'm hearing, I don't, I don't think I can believe this, we just need to find out if we own it, it may very well be poly on this guilt, loans all there.
Yeah.
So we need to find out if we own it before we can actually do anything.
That's right.
Well, that one, that's one of the contingencies we had on doing the water project also.
Yeah, it's the same.
We're trying to get the easement all the way up to silent road, to our water, to that hydrant.
Yeah.
So it's...
I mean, I don't think it'd be a problem, because it helps the property.
For sure. Well, what we, what we had talked about, Hank, was, is actually, if we could develop that property from Mr. Lars' hydrant all the way up Career Tech, it would actually develop water and sewer for that whole piece of property between Career Tech and around that ten.
That's right.
It could open up that whole field, which could be great, that'd be a perfect subdivision. I mean, so it's got some potential. So what, I just need a direction?
By the other one.
Find out, okay. I'll do some more homework on it.
If you can share the street court, you know, the real plan.
All right, the next item, quotes for bridge repair. If everybody remember, when we went our last meeting, Scott had mentioned something about when we talked about the bridge, maintenance and so forth, that project. He was wanting me to get some more quotes, so I was just wanting to talk about this and let you guys know where I'm at with that. I'm in the process of meeting with Cleco, they're right out here at Rosedale, Patrick Construction, I've, I've contacted them as well, so I'm trying to set up a time with them, because obviously, I've got to give them the inspection report of the bridge, so that they can see what needs to be repaired. So once I give that to them, and then they look at it, I'm sure they'll go look at the site, I thought it might be, be glad to go meet them, or have someone, whatever we need to do, but we would appreciate if they would give us a quote. So that would give us a total of three quotes, so I just wanted to give you that, that where I was at. I don't know how long it'll take them to give me a quote. I wouldn't think it'll take a long time, you know, because I've seen, I've read the report. So, but I wanted to give everybody an update, and particularly Scott as well, because he's the one that brought it up in the ass, so, so that, that's where I'm at, so. Is everybody good with just, just these three quotes? We got ten, we already got ten. We'll get Cleco and Patrick, that gives us a total of three.
It's good.
And I think he requested to have three.
That's, no, that's a, that's standard.
Patrick, construction on Castle Hall.
Yes. So I like it, we're, we're still dealing with people right here close to Russell County.
Excellent.
That...
Okay?
All right, the next is the nuisance report. You should have that list in your packet. This came from the first group of properties that were given to me. We went and looked at these properties, the majority of them, there hasn't been any movement. I think there may be a couple on the list that, which was like mowing, things of that nature, that they did mow. Of course, I know for at least one of them, we mowed for them. So all the comments should be there for you to look at, so whatever you need to do from here, I guess, if you're one to pursue with it, you would probably need to be pushed to Mr. Tiller.
Well, I don't see, exist previous ones that are already...I kind of like us to put the lead ones over in the corner. Can you give us a note label on that, Kevin?
I need to schedule, if we were to miss the schedule of a hearing on this, name that, when they close the courts, I need to go ahead and get that rescheduled, I think that's someone who would probably grab up on it.
What about Diane? Diane, is that on here?
Diane?
Yeah.
Y'all haven't asked me to do anything, unless...
You can't really do that, can you, no?
Yeah, that's the... Shoot, who wants that?
It's, uh, reasonable.
Yeah, before you go pulling that one?
No, no, y'all haven't asked me to go before, I'm going to...
Has he been, I thought, was ever written a letter?
That's from February seventh, your mayor's...
That's, that's just on the business license.
Oh, okay.
We went before out there, but it is, it's not, it's not anything.
Nope, that, I'll wait for the back. So you have, do you have any communication with the family manager with any of these people?
I haven't, but every one of them on that list has already received a letter under marcher's sheet, basically, right Diane. All of the lists that, that I have before you there, they have already had a certified letter stating the problem. I'm more or less just following up to see if they responded by doing something, so I'm just basically reporting, noting, you know, of those that I reported that have anything that, know after, even after being notified and mailed, they still haven't done anything. So that's, that was my role, to find, to see if they did anything after they received the notice.
And you prepare a list of updated ones, for the ones that you found that need work, and then in that list, label, of level of priority?
I haven't done that.
And, yes, and then, just keep in mind, when you do these, you know, don't become overwhelmed.
Yeah.
You can't fix them all in a week.
Right.
Just take your time, level them on priority, then, you know, don't come consumed by that. We've got a whole town to take care of. Just going to have the date there, is up to date the letters we sent?
Okay.
So, rate number one, the gardens, the trees were over, and then the next one from the, second one from one of them, same home, the gardens.
Did you say they were?
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Did he tell them?
Park.
Did Louis vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
He did. It's still, he must have done it. He didn't.
Well, I know, but any of them, I'd say you made improvement.
He did make improvement.
Thank you. What do you recommend to me about these?
Well, I mean, I'm, I mean, that's something...
He got me.
Queen circle grass.
Something, I love that.
One down there, because it's been there for a while. Is that on your movie?
I think, because you were very specific, and the owners, it's not happening in front of them, and the condition, I mean, just the grass is, well, it's not, not house grass is...
Well, yeah, I'm thinking of substantial, let's take the one over here, across the road down here, where the unmarked cars are, three trailers, right here next to the...
Well, I'm listed?
Yeah, that, that section. Is that what that first one is, that's top of the list?
It says, I'm on the list, that says that, that the ladder was repaired.
So what we do?
Well, Frank Kimball was over there today, so shouldn't he be another time?
Can you get up on your camera?
I can, yeah, can you give me a copy of the ladder, I can record it, man.
That is, that's just, what you got going on there is, it's actually interfering with a, a physical, in the, a rental problem. I mean, it's actually been vandalized, I believe, am I correct, Tru?
Didn't they, it was vandalized? Some children marked on the doors.
Yeah.
And the father took them over and made them clean it up, but it definitely was messed up in there.
Is your mic on?
Mine, I haven't.
Oh. I wonder if he did.
What about this Charles Woods, it said, had the trash on the ground, is that all?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, we went by there, it was actually, what, what the case there was, there's a lot of trash there.
Oh, yeah, what, what's that?
Uh-oh. Get that mic right there.
When, when the ladder was sent out, there was a lot of trash, so they cleaned all that up, but just so happened, we went by there, and there was some trash that was out, and I'd seen animal got into it. So it was a small bag of trash, so it's like, it probably wasn't like it was, you know, so, but I still noted what I saw. So that was two minutes, it's a bag of trash, that animal probably got in that evening, or early that morning, and I just hadn't went by it, so. But I, me and Billy actually was looking at that, when we was driving to town, and he said there used to be a lot of trash, you know, so that's why, I know, so they cleared it up, but just so happened, it goes trash out on the ground, animals got in, a lot of it.
Well, I think what Brian is saying, probably is a good approach here, is prioritize, let Ken take care of the ones that we already, like you mentioned, the decker property, we're going to give information to them, to Mr. Kimball, and just monitor those, prioritize those, and then deal with it, but this one takes it down.
Uh, there, there's one particular property sites that Diane was mentioning to me here, that, that we want the town to mow the grass, it's basically a vacant block, but the grass is about a foot high.
Where's it at?
It's tagline drive.
Is it on this list?
Yeah.
It's called the park there.
They, actually, I think their homeowners association actually has tried to...
To do so?
Yeah, let's go, let's help them get it.
There is H O A there.
Yeah. You know, there's a group, homeowners association is supposed to take care of it.
And the neighbors didn't want to complain about it. So they need to call them.
You mean, the neighbors that live in there?
The, the neighbors that's beside of them, is the ones calling and complaining about it.
I would give direction of the neighbors call the homeowners association president.
Right, okay.
He's basically going to call.
If he gets a duty, I was, I was the vice president of the homeowners association, but back in 2014, so I know what they're supposed to do, and that's his job. Now, maybe he doesn't want to do that, but it's, it's, it's his, and that's their agenda there, to make sure that those properties been taken care of within the, within their contract, the H O A.
Be a good place to start.
Okay. Okay. All right.
So, Kevin, for our next meeting, can you maybe give this Gavin, to give us the list that has already gone, already been taken care of, like including the decker property, and what happened there, and then putting these in priority?
Okay, so you want me to put these in priority?
Yeah.
And then ones that are, okay, yeah. Uh, the next item, and I want Eric pretty much to take over this, but we need some direction in regards to the police officer job vacancy that we have right now, and I'll just let Eric, he knows what's what, so if you want to go ahead and just discuss that.
Okay, basically, you know, we know Ramondo, he had a year by D C J S standards to, to become certified. He was actually hired in August, he was supposed to attend the last academy, he injured his knee at his house, off duty on a ladder. We got an extension on him through D C J S to allow him time to recover. He had run Thursday as an entrance to the academy, he would not complete that run, so he was not allowed into the academy. Therefore, by D C J S standard, he cannot be certified from that year, speaking with the, he resigned from his position. We're already, you know, running kind of a skeletal crew anyway, which we understand that that just kind of, it, it's, it's selfish to ask for a whole lot during this time, but, you know, I think the, the need to replace him now is, is just overwhelming, we're, we're floating right at water's edge, with our head right at the water right now with the people that we have. Myself, I, I'm working essentially still patrol squad, I pull Detective Kaiser back into a hybrid position to where he's answering calls, and working at patrol. At least two days a week, his primary function now is patrol rather than detective, he's still handling his detective side, and he's also being a backup officer throughout the week, so, you know, it's, it's kind of all ends on deck, and everybody's jumping in and willing to do it, but I, I think being able to get us a spot in right now is just, is just imperative for the citizens and the coverage of the town that we need. I know we advertised for that spot, but I, I've got a couple responses from some certified people, one in particular, very, that, that very highly recommended, and has actually already been interviewed by the previous council, and I think was pretty favorable, who's pretty excited about coming to work here, so, you know, I just hope we can look into that, and, you know, obviously, we get one more person in, get him working, get him or her working, and then we get Gavin out of the academy, because, you know, Gavin, I chose to send Gavin to do the run with Lino, with the expectation that, that Mr. Ramondo may not make it, and we could just slide Gavin in. Ramano may not make it, and we could just slide Gavin into his spot, and, and fortunately, that ended up working out, that we can get Gavin certified earlier, and get him back, so if we could get one person hired, we can stay afloat until Mr. Watts gets out of the academy, and then it will be okay, but I think right now we're a spot, we have to get one in.
Now, Andrew, does that, is that, are they coming, uh, camera view, or no?
I'm coming to make.
How many of that?
I mean, you're certified, all is true.
We're gonna look at a, we're gonna look at a monitoring. Yeah, that's what I'm, I'd like to, hopefully we can be ready to, a week from today. You've got, you've got two certified, are we in contact?
I have two certified officers that have, uh, stated that they, that they are interested in coming here, one of them picked up an application today.
Okay.
And the other one, I, uh, Mr. Mullins, the mechanic guy, he's not picked up a new application, but he has told me in person that he, he is interested, excited about coming to work here.
I just have him, I'd like to advocate, I'll do a few applications, just as, do a letter, the full is application.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That we will have.
I've got a suggestion, Mike.
Go ahead.
And, and we, and this can be, that chief's discretion, but would it be a bad idea to try to hire two? We're, we're down, we're down with Mr. Cow, uh, Mr. Mitchell retired, you filled that position, so that's two vacancies, and now Mr. Ramano leaves the third vacancy. Hire one back, we, go on, I'd already talked about trying to hire back for Tanner, anyone, and I know he thinks that's a good idea, now we're down three.
It's like said, plus we get a place there.
Oh, that's what, that's what I'm saying, chief retired, so Eric, we're down three officers right now.
Hiring one now gets us back to where we're not drowning, and, and we can cover it. Even hiring one officer now, uh, there's just, there's no way to have two people covering every hour of the day. And then you look at vacations, you look at someone wants to get sick, unfortunately, someone wants to get quarantined, and now we're back down again. Basically, I just didn't want to be selfish and ask for too much, but if two people puts us, excellent. If we can get two people, we, we're in both water, and we're good to go, our scheduling works good, we get Gavin out of the academy, and then, once he gets out of the academy, I, I intend to implement back to the ten hour schedule rather than the twelve, which gives us a lot of leeway when people call in, it cuts down a lot of overtime that just happens with the twelve hour shift. Ten hour shifts just work really well, but with six people covering the rate now, it's, it's impossible, and, and, you know, myself and Detective Kaiser, and, and Detective Kaiser's been excellent to do anything I've asked him to do, um, and I'm, and I'm kind of working with him in this hybrid position, and I feel like he's kind of earned a little bit of, of where he's at, but he's been very willing to help us with everything we've asked, um, but even with me and him, if we weren't just taking a full time patrol load now, there's still not enough to do that effective schedule.
Let me ask, uh, Mr. Taylor a question. We, we consider the parks, the wreck community, making it, making it easy to find, if we want to add personnel, personnel maybe to six, or, or can we just, we used to log in, and do that?
Well, you, you used to have, previously, there was everybody on the power of things, see, now you have a six.
Yeah, can we put, my question is, can we now have the parks and wreck personnel community?
Nine?
On the five, on the six?
Yeah, that is right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That on the twin?
That's what I had.
That's my day.
A week for the plan?
Yes, sir.
That comment's off, all right?
I, I feel like, uh, we should take chief's advice, um, we've entrusted government department, he knows what's best for us, and I know that we're trying to operate a budget, and do so, cutting the budget a little bit, but I don't feel like this is one area we need, we need to cut. I, I just feel like, as we seen this evening, heard what we heard this evening, this isn't a time for us to be short handed.
Short handed, that's true.
And have a respect for our citizens of this town, my family, children included, what is the best we can get.
So, with that said, are you all right with doing the parks, wreck, and five? And then we'll have to do, I'm assuming we're interviewing, is that what the council wishes to do? Or are we turning that over to town manager and Eric, to, to make a, to make a, what's the council wishes to do?
We'll still get the applications, I think we should all, we can.
I agree, that's what I'm asking, next Monday is my question, can you all, can we be ready to interview? Will you have enough after what you think, Eric, people you're looking for, and, and you've already got the three in? Is a week's time, give us enough, you have a pool of applications that you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll interview Matt and start the clock.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
You're going now?
We're going.
Do our parks and wreck do that one, you will do maybe another, an hour or so?
You're going to live on that time?
We're going to interview next Monday. And I, we're going, that, we're not going to do that a lot, we're going to interview this again, so, so, we're going to, we're going to interview all, I mean, about thirty?
Thirty is returned right now, uh, but I anticipate more, because the two that I've talked to have not returned their application, but I, but I know they will.
But, I guess not concerning, Derek, but I, right back where we started, we end up kind of people who are certified.
Exactly, and that, the two I've talked to are certified officers.
I don't, I think you go through interviewing again, and then turn right around and send them out to the academy, we're right back where we started.
Exactly, yes, sir. The, the two that I've talked to are certified officers.
Okay.
Um, and, and of course, I know we'll have some more, I anticipate more applying.
So, prior to Monday, on Friday, when all the applications come in, from there, that pool, will you be able to come up with people that we can interview now on Monday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, 'cause what we would like to do in our personnel meeting is interview today evening for that job of that officer.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna, let me just confuse it further. We need to hire an officer, I believe, on here at this level now. Instead of having a community, we probably would better adjourn to recombating this week, so we can legally hire somebody, maybe not, because the community, you know, has to, is that correct, Kevin?
That's correct.
So, is everybody good with adjourned, recombating?
Add some personnel to maybe.
The, the, the parks and wreck, if I.
You don't even let me have a committee, man.
I tell you what, though.
Well, you can have.
Well, who buy you?
Hey, I call especially.
Who buy you?
I don't want that.
Chance of, Mr.'s take, you want to be, for parts during the early or five?
You want him?
I don't think, I think there'll be somebody, in the, in the, in the past, that I'd rate, I wish, for the parks and wreck.
Okay, that way, they'll, they'll know.
I don't think they don't get the hours.
Well, we, we gotta establish, that price, those rates, six or seven, those kind of thing. What's about, let me do it this way, Brian, what service do you need, and is that going to be there?
Four o'clock.
Last?
I'm calling, they're ordering, telling him to hurry.
Four?
I don't know what you're saying.
Can you listen, can you hear me now? Can you mean, at four o'clock with the parks and wreck being here, four, this Monday?
Yes, sir.
Then we'll have the council meeting at six to interview. I'll wait for that. I'll do that.
I've got a question, Eric.
Yes, sir.
Can, uh, can Eric do pre-interviews before we actually have interviews to give us direction? As a chief?
He's wanting to do that kind of checks anyway, right?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, sir.
And interview, against, he created his own pool, I'm saying, can he create his own pool for us to interview versus, you know, if he wants to narrow that down, is that my step to help us out?
Well, I hope, it'd be happy to live if you got four certified applicants, that'd be unheard of.
It would be, but I, I, I've reached out to several people that I, uh, that have approached me about jobs, and they're still interested, I think we will get a few, um, apply this time, and I, me and Mr. Bulkinship absolutely can get together and then look at these applications, have some, some quality people to present to you my day.
But, but then, add that, when the applications are due, why, if you want to look at those applications, we're welcome to go look at those applications and then talk to Eric without anybody, uh, if you want to, is that what you're saying?
Sure, well, I mean, just, Eric is being chief of police, I feel like he has, I know he's way, way better back there than I am.
Right, and I'm, I'm good with whoever he wants to interview to bring before us or interview.
I think, what you just said, is the direction, I'll give you Eric.
Okay.
I mean, you, you and Kevin, together, really, absolutely.
Eric and I was just now talking, if it's okay with the council, he will know, him and I, we will know how many applicants that we want to interview, we'll send out an email Friday evening to let you know how many. That way, you will know, okay, Monday, I got three interviews, four interviews, whatever that case might be. So that way, you will know before, before Monday, to expect your schedule.
That's right.
Could we do like we did the last interviews, and have the officers deliver, deliver those in a packet, and we could look at those prior to Monday?
There are applications?
Yes.
Of those who are being interviewed?
Yeah.
Uh, the, the only issue I see with that is the deadline is Friday four, if we have somebody rolling there at the last minute, drop off an application, I mean.
We could have, but you could have them for us on?
Saturday.
Saturday, Sunday, just to get it to us before the meeting on Monday.
Do you have the police officer?
Just for you, just as far as their, their application, just like we did with you all, you guys, they're, they're.
Absolutely, yeah, we can absolutely get you that, awesome.
Is somebody good?
Sir.
Hello? Are you good, Eric?
Yes, sir.
Over here?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So, I, I, like I say, you know, if, if we could look at two, that would put the police department in a, in a great position to go for them.
Mr. Mayor, was that need to be brought to a vote, a motion to hire two?
Yeah, I think so, I don't know, yeah, we can, but I kind of like, you know, thinking of problems, and we've got all six council members involved.
Plus the applicants, we may not have two applicants.
And, and I think we're looking at certified officers, that's the only ones we are to interview, is that our direction? Is that it?
That's my question, but that'll.
Chief's judgment, okay, all right.
And I feel that we will have a couple very strong certified officers.
I mean, that's something, so we brought, so we brought.
It absolutely does.
Get money back for the cat, does not be in here for six months, I mean, anyway. Okay, can we move on? Everybody good? All right, um, I'll make, is that going to be under your personnel?
Yeah, we could push that to the end if you want, it's your, whatever you like to do, it's good now.
We'll do it later.
That'd be great.
Are you good, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Good turn to you, Eric, do you have anything in your report you think the highlight for us?
I, I think, and I apologize for running off, but I think you guys do get the packets that I have here, so, uh, I'd just like to, to, uh, let you know that the town, we responded to four hundred and forty-six calls for service this past month, uh, eleven motor vehicle accidents, we patrolled twelve thousand three hundred and forty-seven miles, there were, twenty-six total summonses to court, fifteen which were arrest made. Due to the month of June, we had twenty-two new cases come in, uh, as far as, like, you know, talking about criminal cases come in, of those twenty-two, twelve cases were solved, incident and arrest, two cases were, were fatalities, which goes, the way it's reported, it goes into a criminal offense, but, but, uh, those were two cases there. One of those cases was found to be unfounded, a false report, and that ends us for the month of June with seven active cases that are still being pursued by Detective Cowler and officers at this time, um, I feel like those can be closed with minimal effort, so I, I think we'll be good to go on that. Other than that, most, I have Officer Hart report, which, you know, uh, he, he, I don't want to go into, a lot of things, but he did successfully, uh, come up with some new informants with his role, so he's been very productive, um, on that role. I printed out some information on, on the fatality accident, and in the fatality that we responded to, and, um, letting it square, I thought maybe the council might have some questions on, and I'll just leave that, if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those, but, other than that, I'll just kind of leave it to any questions that you have here.
I do have a question for both of you, I know in the past, uh, because Mark was playing your roles, we got these two reports together, but is there a way that we could have them two individual reports, uh, just that we know, one's our town manager, one's our police report, rather than have them, because right now they're together? Yeah, in our package, just have them two individuals rather than have them together? Would that be okay?
You want a separate package?
Just a separate, the police report, just to be by itself, you know, I mean, put it in the, in the, that's what I think, that is.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. It would be probably one. Yeah, I just saw that scare, I would be done before.
Okay.
There, man. There, man, I'm out.
Okay, any more here, sir?
Um, and, and I apologize, this may not be the, the time to ask this, but there was one thing I would like, just to kind of get the council's direction on, um, I've had some of the officers approach me about relaxing their tattoo policy. Myself, I've never been one that's big on showing tattoos, so, and that may be something that I can just come up with on my own discretion, but I'd kind of like to have your, your guys' input on it, because it is a direct representation of the town, what they, what the police officers are seeing in the public, and that's kind of, I apologize if this is not the right time to ask, but I'd kind of like to get your guys' opinion on, how do you feel about relaxing that policy?
Like, it's time to think about that, I think people, I don't know exactly what you mean by relaxing.
Um, we have some officers that wish to, uh, basically, uh, show tattoos, have tattoos that can, that can show, right now, we have, we have a strip couple tattoos in public, they want to be able to show tattoos, so, I know in the past, we've had a couple officers there.
Exclusively, yeah.
Like I said, it's just something that, I, I would, kind of like your guys' opinion on that, because that's, I guess I'm kind of in the old school mentality, that that's been the way I viewed police officers forever in public, and, uh, if it's time to make the change with, with the changing times, we can do it, but.
Probably one, we're all six of us, I'm listening, and they all cancel, between them, keep it up, a plan, or if ever had you want a sale?
Yes, sir.
That's just me, the president, councilors, the resident, it's our time.
Will Chris, I don't want that. That'll give him, that'll give him time?
Yeah, that's right. We'll do it next Monday.
Yes, sir.
We'll do it next Monday.
Yes, sir.
They give you that amount, amount of time to come up with some type of resolution for that?
It does, yes, it does. And I have some sample policies.
Go ahead, yes. Go ahead.
In mind.
We're gonna do it next Monday.
Bill, there.
I'm serious. So what is the hearing issue?
I understand, no, we're not. I had a problem.
How's that? Is that good? Okay. Anything else?
No, specifically.
Mr. Philer?
Oh.
Kevin, too.
I, I don't have anything this time. I have a couple of things I've been asking to comment on, I guess, about the, uh, fire, um, fire, uh, department responding to scenes. I could pick that up in the technical section, I guess.
Okay.
I think that's all I have. Since we got taken care of the other issue earlier, I'm afraid I need to address that.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about that. Uh, under this new business, um, of course, we, I just, we wrote back here, I had, uh, set up a meeting with Debbie Milton, uh, in trying to give arms around, uh, understanding everything regarding the downtown revitalization, where we're at, the monies, the grants. Uh, I know Shane, uh, he's was in, uh, uh, involved with that pretty heavily right now. Uh, he's very, uh, tied up per se with the pool and just different things, building and so forth going on. Uh, so I wanted to basically have a meeting with her. I've known for years, working projects with her, you know, so that, that wasn't the issue. But I wanted to try to get up and speak where we're at, uh, because I do know, uh, in my experience, when you deal with grants, when you're in different projects, everything is time sensitive. So I met with her. There is actually a grant that we are going after, and that's what that is. That's the industrial revitalization fund. Uh, it's a grant that we're asking six hundred thousand dollars for. That is a one-to-one type ratio. So in other words, if we fill this application out and we get it and they award us six hundred thousand dollars, then we've got to come up with or show a match of six hundred thousand dollars. Okay? Up to date, when, when we met, we've already got four hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we can put toward our six hundred dollar match. So we're just barely over a hundred thousand of being able to get six hundred thousand if, if we're awarded six hundred thousand. This is for the theater. Uh, and then of course, we're still, you know, uh, working, we're still project finishing and things of that nature. So, you know, we will continue to develop more and more match. But I think the town would be willing to come up with a hundred thousand. Normally, we'll get six hundred thousand. You see what I'm saying? Uh, so with that being said, like I mentioned, obviously, everything is time sensitive. In order for us to apply for this, we have to have the application finished by July thirty-one, thirty-first. Okay? Which means we have to have a resolution passed tonight. Uh, and then, of course, Debbie and I, we will be jumping into this and trying to get, I'll be working with her, trying to get everything we need in regards to filling out this application, uh, because we ain't got just a couple of weeks or so to get this done. So I may be pretty tied up per se. Of course, she, she's the, she's leading it, so she'll definitely be tied up. But I'm trying to, uh, give as much time as I can in helping her to make sure that we get this, uh, application in, in hopes of receiving this. Uh, this is something that I, I mentioned this to Scott the other day when we were talking. And, uh, he was very aware of this grant. In fact, he said, yeah, I'm glad y'all remembered that. That was something that I was trying to, trying to make sure that we wouldn't forget. Uh, so that's basically in a nutshell, uh, we, we basically need this resolution passed so that we can continue progressing, uh, completing this application, uh, for this project.
You need both those documents approved?
Yes.
Is there a motion then then?
Uh, hold on just a second for now. No, we, she, she said that we got, had all this, uh, four hundred eighty-five thousand, she got this one. When did she do that?
That's what she did.
Right, did that? Oh, well, this was last week.
That's what she did.
Oh, as far as her match?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. So we need to verify and make sure her numbers on this resolution. Uh, we just need to verify that the numbers that we have on, uh, the resolution that she gave us. We would need to verify that. So I guess when you do the emotion, we would just need to make sure that after we clarify that there's not a typo or something, uh, is, is what we're, we're asking. Like, Diana, what you're saying?
Right, because as a resolution that we have before you, it says that our match is two thirty-five hundred. Even says it's.
Four hundred five?
Uh, you know, a hundred and seventy thousand would be all that the town would have. So it's a pretty big deal.
How, where did you get all the four thousand?
That's the numbers. When we had our meeting, we had all the papers laid out and she added everything up and she said, okay. And I have.
She being who?
Debbie Milton. She's the one with a couple of plateau. Uh, yeah, I see right here, here's our figures. This is the figures we went with.
Well, this is verified.
Yeah, we, so I guess when you make the motion, you may want to, you know, have, that we will verify and make sure that there's not a typo or, or something because we've got something more different here, so.
In other words, that two thirty-five, two hundred thirty-five, yeah, is not correct.
We need to verify that.
I call Debbie and remember the amounts unless she forgot something.
You talked to Debbie and what she came up with was used two hundred thirty-nine thousand, not, not four hundred and seven thousand?
Well, what she came up with, the town would still need to match the two thirty-five, at least saying the town would just need a hundred and seventy thousand.
According to what her and I have discussed. Yeah.
Can this wait for Monday?
Yeah.
No, because I got to be allowed on the application.
Oh, no, no. We can, we can, we just need a resolution. We have to have a resolution and the application completed by July thirty-first. She knew this is our monthly meeting. So she was thinking we wouldn't have another meeting until August meeting. So that's why we needed it today. So I think, I feel pretty good to talk to Debbie and say, hey, we, we had some issues here, typo, whatever, we want to be clear. We're meeting again Monday. So we'll get the resolution Monday. I, I think we should be able, okay?
Yeah, feel a bit of real there because I don't want sadness if it's like.
Yeah, we, right. It being cleaner. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Alright.
So with that being said, since we're talking about this application, uh, we, we have, just so you guys know, we have our next downtown revitalization meeting this Wednesday, which is the fifteenth, tenth o'clock. And I know that there's, we are pushing the land group to try to hurry and get their, uh, plans completed. Uh, they have sent me, uh, basically a couple bullet points of some things that they need in order to meet that deadline of having, uh, the Russell County Theater blueprints and so forth completed. Number one is, uh, well, the biggest thing is they need to hear from this, uh, gentleman that is supposed to be giving them information regarding the theater sound, visual lighting, curtains and so forth. Uh, Mr. Higgins, I think. We, they have, they're still waiting upon him giving the information. They can't proceed or they will not be able to get it done if they don't hear from, from him right away is, is his issue. So I don't know. Maybe you guys want to give me direction to try to reach out and get in touch with this?
I have that, too.
Or, yeah, there if you can, or. That's just one thing.
I'm sure it's good up to you guys there.
Yes, yes. That would be great. And the other item that I probably need you guys to give me a nod, I guess, is when we looked at the, the survey, uh, that was completed, they also needed the contours. So the contours, whoever we had to do our survey did not provide the contours. So that's something I may need you guys to give me direction to touch base. Yeah, elevations, elevations, so that they know where they could bring out their, their basement door. They need to be able to look at the contours of the land. So it's more than just putting stakes out. They need a little more information. So sort of three D. Yeah.
So is that an engineering case?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the surveyor should be able to provide this, however they did, which it probably makes a little more money.
Who needed this?
Uh, the land group.
Aren't they the engineers for these projects?
Yeah, but somebody did the survey. They didn't do the survey.
I hope to. Did they have to survey that?
I was just, oh, gas. So I'm, that's one thing I hadn't read and found out yet. Who did the survey? I'm guessing it wasn't them, or they wouldn't be asking.
I might want to start on the land group.
Did I ask you a question or you? Valley, Ross?
I believe you're blue.
That'd be Valley.
Blumsland?
So. Valley? I mean, if you give me direction, I'll reach out, figure out what's going on. That's all I ask.
She knows. Make the call.
Okay. Alright, thank you. That's what I need.
Anything else? Mr. Blankenship?
I'm good for now.
Thank you. Did you submit this quote? You want to talk about the quote for the claim? And the other business? I think we talked about that, didn't we?
Yes.
Before?
Yeah, this is other business, something, guy.
What is the quote?
We did not put it in there. I think that you all asked him to give other quotes.
Okay.
I thought it's fourteen seven. I think it's fourteen seven. Come on.
This is for the wax and the floor, the nail? So do you need me to get some quotes or what do you need me to do? Is this Shane?
Are we getting close enough on that thing you had going on? Do you need your rooms and all that stuff?
Well, I do know that we, we did, uh, send a video out, uh, for the year and so forth. So it should be on its way. It's just a company that we already use. Sorry? Just a company that's already comfortable, comfortable in the town, doing the town cleaning. Then I don't see why we wouldn't use somebody else. Just fourteen hundred bucks, too, so.
Is that a big deal per view?
That's under my five thousand. Is that what you're saying?
How often are they cleaning over there?
How often are they cleaning?
For this is for two waxes.
Okay, well, this is to finalize the gym floor. Finalize the gym floor. Probably not the gym floor.
It's not the gym floors.
Just the floors. The tile. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong area. Didn't deal with this.
Is that how?
It's in there.
So fourteen hundred of that?
Fourteen, it's over fourteen. The fourteen was for cleaning, I believe. The waxing, uh, once all the tiles, you know, they need to come in and do a good wax job over all the tile. And that is separate. I can see everybody, that, I think it was in your last package that we had and we were supposed to have two more quotes.
I do know a gentleman that loves, unless it's the same person that lives in London that does this kind of work. I can get a quote if you want two quotes pretty quick. He does pads. Is that the same one? He's a Wilma? Wilma, good woman. Are these are different people? Yeah, but the Wilma gentleman is huge. Yeah, I know that they, they do pads.
It's actually.
He probably can give a quote if there's a need for another one. I just feel like since they're already doing it, they would already. Have they already done it? It's clean.
Yeah, I'm assuming wax is one time then. Every two days. Wax every month?
Now, they should be able to furnish it. Yeah, that wax is not, that's not a monthly ordeal. That's, they'll probably have two coats down on it and then they'll come back in six months and actually furnish it. Um. Yeah, but wax should, they should be waxing every time they, yeah. Plenty of shades will keep it. We should have the wax every off.
I'm getting hungry now.
We don't have any food, do you? Y'all want to call somebody and bring it in here? We're probably, probably a little bit. Um, Brad, you want another, will you get two more quotes?
No.
If we're local, if we have one local, I think get another quote, just to verify.
Yeah, he actually lives in town, London.
Okay.
This other guy. I guess maybe I'm, I'm confused. Is the right way cleaning? Do they clean the town hall?
Yeah.
Every, every week, right?
Yeah, they do the town hall, but they do not have a contract to clean the gym.
Okay.
Uh, but they did the, uh, the, clean that four J Street, J Street, I think it's a, that they do not have a contract to clean over there.
Okay.
So he's set a contract then to clean up their mess.
Right, right.
I see. Okay. Then, yes, I like getting cheaper quotes. I'm sorry, I thought we already had one or a quote. Okay, yeah. Well, I, I can, he probably can do it tomorrow because I know. And I know I can get one more quote and he's, and he lives in town, he's local. Uh, unless somebody knows him, I can look for three quotes, but.
I still have one question for you.
Okay.
When are we opening the community center? As far as the meeting rules, which to me will determine whether we can go ahead and wait a week to get a deal this Monday or we need to deal with it tonight. And now when? Do we have any idea?
I haven't asked, I didn't ask Shane today.
Okay.
You know, but I can find out.
Now, do you not understand my concern here?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We should send the thing to Purdy, uh.
That's what I think. Just like, get somebody to do it, like, you have it good and every time comes in. Because it's, 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 it's this week.
I don't know. Do you remember, uh, I, 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 we ordered it.
I don't know, do you remember the, I, I, we ordered it, but I can't remember the delivery date, I can't remember the delivery date. It might be. Shane had, Shane had the fleet super pressing.
This is the place we.
Is there a moment I'm going here?
I, I guess, it's probably a bit of a.
Wrong answer.
I did a story, took pictures the other day, so you can check it out tomorrow.
Oh, in the paper? Oh, good.
I'd like to propose something to council. I'd like their manager, get Shane, and let him, as long as it's within his purview, get that building cleaned, and let's not worry with it, and get, because it's gonna take some time to clean that building, and we we got a beautiful facility out there, and I really don't wanna wait until September, right now, for November, October, that. That's, that's where I'm sitting.
I'd jump on it in the morning, I agree.
Man, you understand what I'm saying, that we need to let the manager handle these kind of things? You good, Brad?
Absolutely.
You feel like you wanna get another quote, you get another quote.
Yeah.
Well, I think it would be good, unless you just wanna stick with the first one we're using.
You don't want, no? Okay. All right, everybody good, we're moving. We're in recess.